Good evening and welcome to City of Pasco's council meeting. The council thanks you for being part of the city government. At meetings, the city council takes formal action on items, holds public hearings, and conducts other business of the city. Agenda packets are available on the City of Pasco's website at www.pasco-gov/agenda. This meeting is being televised live on PSC TV, channel 191, on spectrum cable in Pasco and Richland, and is streamed on the city's Facebook page, website, YouTube channel, and go-to webinar. This and previous council meeting video is available on the city's website. Lastly, the public may submit their comments and/or questions by contacting the city manager, city clerk, or by using the Ask Pasco app. And with that, can I get roll call, please?
Councilmember Campos.
Present.
Milam.
Here.
Roach.
Here.
Present.
Serrano.
Here.
Torres.
Present.
Mayor Potem Maloney.
Present.
And Mayor Barajas.
Present. If you would please join, stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sorry. It's not loading. Well, I'm having a little bit of technical difficulty, so we're swapping for now. And with that, we move on to item, um, four of our agenda. The Consent Agenda. All items listed under the Consent Agenda are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by roll call vote, or as one motion in the form listed below. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If further discussion is desired by council, council members, or the public, the item may be removed from the Consent Agenda to the regular agenda and considered separately. With that, we have item A, Approval of Meeting Minutes. To approve the minutes of the Pasco City Council's regular meeting held on March 21st, retreat held March 25th and March 26th, the regular workshop held on March 28th. Item B, Bills and Communications. To approve claims to the total amount of $8,286,987.09. To approve bad debt write-off for utility billing, ambulance, cemetery, general accounts, miscellaneous accounts, and municipal court, non-criminal, criminal, and parking accounts receivable in the total amount of $142,153.87, and of that amount authorized zero to be turned over to collections. Item C, Resolution Incorporating the Regional Pavement Cut Policy to the City's Design and Construction Standards and Specializations. Motion to approve Resolution Number 4165, adopting the regional pavement cut policy and revision of Pasco's design and construction standards and specifications for public works improvements. Item C, sorry, item D. Resolution Interlocal Cooperative Agreement Quad Cities BFHD for Funding of Regional Algo Bloom Screening Lab Service. To move, I move to approve the resolution. Item E, Resolution Franklin County Comprehensive Emergency Management Plan. And with that, can I get a motion?
I move to approve the Consent Agenda as read.
Thank you. Can we get a roll call? Yes, thank you. Moved by Mayor Potem Maloney and seconded by Councilman Campos. And with that, can we get a roll call, please?
Before we get a roll call, I just, I have a question which hopefully if answered, won't affect whether or not I make a motion. We talked about Charlie, item Charlie, the resolution to incorporate the regional pavement cut policy. We'd asked Director Worley whether or not there was any input from the building community. I know last week when we discussed this, the answer was no. Just curious for staff whether or not further discussion's been held with that segment of our community?
He is on the line.
Okay. Director Worley, did you hear that question?
Sorry, my vision is good. Not that good, though. I can't see.
Director Worley?
Sorry again, Steve.
If you can hear us, you're on mute.
I actually have a message from that he is having technical issues on his end as well, so. So I don't believe there was a further opportunity to do any outreach.
Okay.
In the interim.
Procedurally, if I were to want to pull that, or Mr. Briggs, we pass that point? Or do we, if I were to want to pull that from the Consent Agenda, we have a motion in a second. Would we need to, I mean, I don't think I can make a separate motion on top of those, correct?
Right, there's already a pending motion to approve. I think that would need to, um, forward.
Either be, okay.
And then we would go from there?
Can I rescind my motion, or does that, or are we going to, at this point in time, before?
You could, you could move to table.
Would that allow us to move the item to the regular agenda to have further discussion?
It could, or you could do that through a motion to move it from the Consent Agenda.
What is there, so given that we have a motion in a second, what actually do we need to take now to be able to move this to discussion? So, I just want to make sure I know what I'm doing right now, because I.
I mean, arguably, if I'm the only one that has these feelings, we could just go forward, proceed with the roll call vote, and if it passes, then that's that.
I think if Councilmember Serrano moved to amend your motion, then that could move forward.
Okay. Then, in that case, I, I move to amend Mayor Potem Maloney's motion, seconded by Councilman Campos, to approve the roll call, or the, to approve the Consent Agenda as read by removing item C, Charlie, from said agenda, and placing it for discussion in the general, um, wow, I guess we'd have to press it out to 10 for unfinished business, I guess, because it's not an ordinance, it's not a hearing. Yeah, to moving it to item 10 for further discussion today.
There's a motion, is there a second?
I'll second your motion.
Moved by Councilman Pete Serrano and seconded by Councilman Campos.
So, do we need to get a, do we need to vote on the amendment first?
Yes.
And then vote on the original, so?
So we'll vote on the motion.
So next we vote on Pete's motion.
So it was seconded by Councilman Campos.
Right, so now we need to vote. Do we need to roll call vote, or can we voice vote?
It'll look like that.
Yeah, roll call vote for the amendment.
Can we get a roll call vote?
Yes.
For the amendment, please.
So, Councilmember Roach. Yes. Serrano.
Yes.
Campos.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Milam.
Yes.
Maloney.
Yes.
And Barajas.
Yes.
All right, so now we vote for the rest of it?
Yeah, I think we want to.
That's, the motion hasn't amended.
So, I'll do that roll call. Be ready. All right, Councilmember Serrano?
Yes.
Campos?
Yes.
Torres?
Yes.
Milam?
Yes.
Maloney?
Yes.
And Barajas?
Yes.
All right, so now we vote for the rest of it?
Yeah, I think we want to.
That's, the motion hasn't amended.
So, I'll do that roll call. Be ready. All right, Councilmember Serrano?
Yes.
Campos?
Yes.
Torres?
Yes.
Milam?
Yes.
Roach?
Yes.
Maloney?
Yes.
And Barajas?
Yes.
Thank you for all.
Sorry.
No, you're fine. Okay. And with that, we move on to item five, Proclamations and Acknowledgements. And we do have a proclamation. City Manager Dave Zabel, would you like to say some words?
Actually, the proclamation has been presented by Councilmember Roach.
Okay, handoff's been made. Thank you. I, Mayor, thank you for recognizing this. I want to warmly welcome some of the community members in this audience right now, who will be receiving this proclamation. They're from the Muslim community, Pasco Muslim community. They are Mr. Huck, Mrs. Khan, and Mr. Barber. And so I, would you like them to come to the podium, or?
Yes, absolutely. If you have some words you like, which, if you would like to share, feel free to do so.
Okay. Come on forward if you feel comfortable to. All three of you, if you like.
You got to turn the red light on. It's, it's at the bottom of the.
On the base, yes.
Look closer. Close to the, looks like our city man, deputy city manager's got you, or.
Yeah, I have never used them before, so. Yeah, anyway, my, my name is Mian, first name, M-I-A-N, last name is Huck, H-A-Q. I've been in Tri-Cities in '77. I was one of the first Muslim families settled here, but now we have over 1,000 families. And, uh, is, you know, if you happen to sometime go to one of the mosque, like Islamic Center of Tri-Cities, West Richland, or Kenwick, we don't have one yet in Pasco, but hopefully we will, you will see about 20 nationalities. It's like UNO, refugees, immigrants, like me, coming from different parts of the world and making home here. And, uh, we, we cherish the freedom, enjoy the liberty, and everyone has his own culture, faith, and, you know, different segment, but one thing combines us together is, one is the language, English, and we communicate, other is the freedom of expression. Ramadan is one of the event, the whole month, when we, you know, celebrate fasting, and we get together one, at, at least once a week, and, you know, you're, you're welcome to come sometime on Fridays, and you will see our kind of ethnic food from Afghanistan, Swalia, Bosnia, Pakistan, South America, United States, every, you know. So it's, it's, it's a great honor to be here, and if you proclaim Ramadan as a month of celebration, you know, recognize us, it will be a privilege.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for those words.
Should I turn it off now?
Yes, please, thank you.
Perfect. So, first of all, I would like to congratulate Mayor Barajas for being the first Latina mayor of Pasco.
Thank you.
Pasco is unique in electing the first Latina mayor, and it is also unique in recognizing the Muslim community. I don't think any other city has done that so far, so thank you for that. Thank you for affirming the Muslim community. We are educators, we are doctors, small business owners, engineers, scientists, homemakers, and come from, I think it's more than 23, more than 20 countries. I counted just the other day, and maybe 25 to 30 different nationalities represented in the Muslim community, and particularly doctors. So chances are that you, some of you have Muslim doctor in the community, so, um, every fifth person in the world is a Muslim, every three, five out of three people are from Asia, which we are all from Asia right here. So we're really not a minority in that sense, but in the Tri-Cities, we are a minority. And sometimes, but thank you for acknowledging us in the month of Ramadan. This is the month that our faith binds us together, and we are all fasting, every single one of us that is here is fasting, and please don't mind when we leave early, because we break fast at 7:30 tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for your words. And with that, I'll read the proclamation. Ramadan, April 2nd to May 2nd. Whereas the City of Pasco will continue to affirm our commitment to ensuring that its values remain welcoming and compassionate by pursuing policies that respect the dignity and rights of our community regardless of race, religion, immigration status, or country of origin. And, whereas, the City of Pasco recognizes its Muslim community members have and continue to impact, improve lives as teachers, engineers, doctors, healthcare workers, civil servants, small business owners, and social workers. And, whereas, throughout the pandemic, our Muslim community led efforts to improve and support the health and well-being of our community by providing masks, donating hundreds of pounds of food through food drives, and organizing and promoting vaccination drives. And, whereas Ramadan is a holy month of fasting, a time of spiritual introspection, prayerfulness, reflection, forgiveness, and appreciation for the abundance that God has provided. And, whereas Ramadan falls on the ninth month of the Islamic calendar year and begins 10 to 12 days earlier each year, allowing the month to fall in every season. And, whereas, in 2022, Ramadan begins at sunset on Sunday, Saturday, on Saturday, April 2nd, and ends on the evening of Monday, May 2nd. And, whereas, Muslim believers will provide, will practice self-sacrifice by depriving themselves of food and drink during the daylight hours for 30 days, focusing and increasing, and focusing on increasing their consciousness of the presence of God in their lives, reaffirming their commitment to service of others that their faith compels, and expressing gratitude for the blessings they enjoy, health and well-being, and life itself, to observe a period of enlightenment and communion culminating in the festival of breaking fast, or Eid al-Fitr. Not sure if I said that correct. A three-day festival of Islam and one of Islam's major holidays. And, now therefore I, Blanch Barajas, Mayor of the City of Pasco, Washington, do hereby proclaim April 2nd to May 2nd, 2022, 2022 as Ramadan in the City of Pasco, and express our deepest respect to Muslims in Pasco and throughout the Tri-Cities on this occasion, and urge the community to honor and reflect on the health and well-being of family, friends, and fellow citizens. Who should I hand this to? Any comments from our council members? Pete, Councilman Serrano does have some words.
I just had one thought. I mean, I think this is an awesome proclamation. I think it's great that we are recognizing our community. I, I will say, the first thing that I thought of was, I do have concern when we're proclaiming certain religions. We talked, at, at least I remember talking with council about whether or not we should open with prayer, and there was a concern as to whether or not we could involve every religion in that. And I just, I hope this doesn't bring some unintended consequences if we don't recognize every religion. So that's, that was my one thought of this, is I think it's great, I think we should have a proclamation for all religious high holidays. But then, if we, I just hope that we don't accidentally inadvertently open a door liability is my concern. And I don't know if that's, I don't want an opinion on that right now, but whether or not that's something we ought to be concerned about, I, I would like thoughts on that. So, again, not now. That's my only concern. Otherwise, I think it's great, and I think we should, I'd like to go to every religious high holiday celebration myself, so, just one thought.
Thank you, thank you for that. City Manager, do you have some comments? Thank you. Okay, and with that, we move on to item number six on our agenda, Visitors Other Than Agenda Items. This item is provided to allow citizens the opportunity to bring items to the attention of the city council or to express an opinion on an issue. Its purpose is not to provide a venue for debate or for the posing of questions with the expectation of an immediate response. Some questions require consideration by council over time and after a deliberate deliberative process. With input from the number of different sources, some questions are best directed to staff members who have access to specific information. Citizen comments will normally be limited to three minutes each by the mayor. Those with lengthy messages are invited to summarize their comments and/or submit their written information for consideration by the council outside of formal meetings. And with that, do we have any comments from any of our visitors tonight? Please step forward and state your name for the record.
Hello, my name is Alexia Estrada, and I just really wanted to thank council for tonight's proclamation, and I think it's a really great step towards inclusivity. As someone who has been community organizing here on the ground, I have seen how our Muslim community shows up for all of Pasco, and I'm excited that we get to celebrate and recognize Ramadan as a city. So thank you so much, and I think it's a really important step for us.
Thank you. Any other comments, ma'am? Go ahead and state your name for the record, please.
My name is Virginia Tomlinson. I've never done this before, so, um, I just have three things to say, and that is, first, I have loved living in Pasco for almost eight years, and I love it more, even more tonight. And I want to say Ramadan Mubarak.
Thank you.
And Ramadan Kareem.
Yes.
To, to my Muslim neighbors. And I want to thank council for making this resolution, and for everything you do to make Pasco a wonderful place to live for our diverse population. So, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Any other comments from within our visitors? Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of council. My name is Emily Maloney, and I am here on behalf of the Taco Crawl Committee to invite you to the Sixth Annual Pasco Taco Crawl. This year's event will be $30 for 20 tacos. It will run from April 22nd to May 7th. We are excited to be taking booklet pickup back to Vinnie's, voting, which closes May 6th at 3:00 PM for the Best Taco in Pasco, will be at Vieira's Bakery this year, and we will be announcing the Best Taco in Pasco at the Cinco de Mayo Festival on May 7th. As always, proceeds will go to benefit the Boys and Girls Clubs of Benton and Franklin Counties, and we are excited for fantastic sponsor support this year, including from our great friends at the Port of Pasco. And this guarantees that we will be able to benefit the kids while bringing hundreds of Taco Crawlers to downtown Pasco. For those of you who are not very familiar with the event, the event has raised over $47,000 for the, the children of the Boys and Girls Clubs. We've had over 3,000 Taco Crawlers come to downtown Pasco and eat tacos with us, and we have sold more than 43,000 tacos as part of the Taco Crawl event. Tech, tickets are selling super fast this year, so do not wait to buy in. I'm not even sure we're going to raise the price this year, that's how fast they're selling, and we hope to see you all there.
Thank you. Can you state the dates again?
April 22nd to May 7th.
Perfect, thank you. I thought you would come in with a plethora of tacos.
You would think so, but no.
Thank you. Anyone else wishes to speak before we move forward? Seeing no one else speaking, we will move on to item number seven, Reports From Committees and/or Officers. Councilman Campos.
This is, this is actually regarding some comments on the last, I don't have any reports, but just want to make a comment to staff, or to, to the audience. We wouldn't be awesome if it weren't for all the community involvement, and all we are up here is facilitators, and so, continue to do the work that you guys are doing in the community. We'll listen to you guys the best we can and try to represent you the best we can up here, and make sure that it continues to be an awesome place.
Thank you for your comments.
I did have a quick comment as well. I did attend the, what is it, Cable Bridge Lighting Committee meeting last week, and Deputy Mayor, I mean, excuse, Deputy City Manager, Adam Lincoln, was also in attendance, and I believe he volunteered to be a part of the continuing committee, so, thank you for that. It looks like the lighting does need to be replaced here soon, and they're going to be out for RFP on those lights as well, so, thank you.
Good to hear. Mayor Potem Maloney, and then City Manager, do you have some questions, comments? You're confusing me.
Yeah, I just wanted to mention that I found out, gosh, late last week, that I've been selected to be on the Legislative Priorities Committee for the AWC, the Association of Washington Cities. So I will be able to help make sure that the AWC is understanding the perspective of members of Eastern Washington and, you know, communities over here that maybe aren't always having their voice heard over in Olympia. So, I would love all of your comments and feedback as to ways we can do that, so please, I'll be working with, I believe, Adam Lincoln, Deputy City Manager Adam Lincoln is the primary for our legislative, so if you have any comments that you'd like to write, just to make sure we stay legal, you send them to him, not directly to me, but I'll be looking forward to raising our voices over the next couple of years.
Perfect, thank you. Any further comment? Yes?
Way to be a real pillar in the community, Adam.
Okay, with no further comment from our council members, we go on to item 7B, General Fund Muster Report, with Director Sitdo.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. No significant update after our conversation on the quarterly reports, just an asterisk on the report that usually during January and February, we're closing the city's books, and there's a lot of accrual reversals in the beginning of the year, and new revenue streams have not quite hit our books yet, so it will change slightly for the month of January as we report out for the future.
Thank you for that. Any questions or comments from our council? We do have one from Deputy Mayor.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that, you know, we have seen this before, and I, I think that's really important for the community to help understand that we are becoming much more transparent, and intentionally so, in terms of what information that our community can see about how our financial operations are going, how the revenue's going, where the money's being spent, and that's really, really important. So I'm, so, even just this report is in much more detail and, and much more easily understood by layman, so, I'm excited by the work you're doing, Director Sitdo, and you and your staff, and so, again.
And so, again, big kudos. I know I had a chance to say that earlier, but I'll say it again, very, very positive changes that we've been able to make for transparency and community involvement. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. With no further comment, we move on to our next item, item eight. Hearings and council action on ordinances and resolutions relating there, too. And we do have item 8A, an appeal, Duarte Rezone RS 12 to R1 denial. And Mr. Briggs, would you like to?
Yes, I'd like to go through the quasi judicial hearing script. And so, this is a quasi judicial hearing. So, it's the application of law to a pending permit. And so, for that reason, we have to go through the script and make sure that no one has any conflicts under the appearance of fairness doctrine. So, a quasi judicial hearing is to render a final decision on the materials presented. This is actually a closed record hearing as well. The hearing examiner developed the record. So, we are confined to the record from the hearing examiner. However, things that are generally known, such as the lot size in the area, we could certainly consider those sorts of things, the surrounding zoning, things of that nature. But certainly not some sort of ex parte communication with any of the parties. So, a quasi judicial hearing is defined as a proceeding which council defines the legal rights, duties, or privileges of the specific parties in a hearing or contested proceeding. Again, the appearance of fairness doctrine applies. It must be fair in three respects, form, substance, and appearance. All council members should consider whether they have potential conflicts as follows. Demonstrated bias for or against any of the parties, any direct or indirect financial interest in the outcome of the proceeding which would affect the council members personally, whether there has been any prejudgment of the issues prior to hearing the facts, whether there's been any ex parte contact with anyone other than staff prior to the hearing, any other conflict with a council member believes would prevent them from hearing the matter fairly impartially. If any council member has any of these concerns or disclosures, now would be the time to make those known.
I'm going to interrupt you real quick. If we can, just a couple of housekeeping rules. If we can please, in the audience, keep quiet so that we can hear what's going on up here and our council members can respond. If you could just keep it down a little bit. Thank you.
I think, I think he may be trying to interpret. Is that right?
Yes.
Is that, is that okay if he's doing, sorry, I didn't mean to?
Well, that...
If I can make a quick question, I know we offer for translation services on request. In the case that we don't, on something like a quasi judicial matter like this, does that change our obligations and requirements a little bit? Because I think it's obviously really important that someone coming through such a clear legal proceeding is able to be understood and understand us. And I think that that was some comment in the appeal as well, that there was, that there was a communication barrier that could be problematic. Can you just, I know I'm interrupting the script, and I apologize for that. But can you please clarify for us on that?
No, yes, there's no right per se to have an interpreter in a hearing such as this where you're applying for some sort of benefit, in this case, of rezone. But if the city were to provide something like interpreter services for hearings such as this hearing, they would need to make sure they do so uniformly. But I don't, I don't see that as a particular right. It isn't like in a criminal proceeding, for example, where you'd have the right to have an interpreter in court. And so, it sounds like the appellant in this circumstance did bring a interpreter with them. But again, yeah, you're right. If we had one here, we'd know that they were certified. And we could, you know, have a sort of a uniform standard there. And I do agree that there was an issue with a language barrier, having reviewed the record in this.
So, I guess with that, I'd just ask mayor if we could allow the interpretation to go along, the translation to go along with our record, even though it may be a little bit disruptive to us.
Correct. I have, I'm not opposed to it. Is anyone else?
Mr. Briggs, you mentioned the uniformity. I mean, does making this exception create any type of issue for the city?
Well, I don't know that an exception's been made here. It seems like the appellant brought someone with them who's going to interpret. And I don't know if that is an accommodation on our end. It seems quite minimal.
I understand your questions directly. They're talking about city provided.
No, I get that. I just wanted to confirm that. Albeit we're not providing an interpreter, typically this doesn't arise. And just confirming that it's, to your point, I see that applicants have brought their own interpreter. And we're not really furnishing anything from the city's perspective. So, I think it's just important to have that out there on the record.
Okay. No, fair enough, fair enough. Okay, so, does any council member have anything they would like to disclose?
No.
Okay. Are there any members of the public seeking to disqualify a member of council from participating in the proceedings? Okay, yeah, there's nothing. And so, again, this is closed record. So, we're limited to the review of the hearing examiner's record. Any party in interest who's participated can present. But they're generally staying within, you know, what was presented at the hearing. Notwithstanding, a lot of the stuff concerning a rezone is really generally known stuff, you know, lot sizes and zoning and whatnot, which is certainly fair game.
Okay. Does this also include new material?
New, and by new material, I would think it'd be something like, you know, you have someone presenting some information about, well, we think it would be a good fit because we're going to put, you know, a certain type of structure on, once we built something like that that wasn't in the record. Or a council member drove by and spoke with someone in the area. But as long as it's not anything like that, then we should be fine. So, new material wouldn't be, we determine that, you know, the lots in the area have a certain, you know, lot size. I think that sort of stuff is okay.
Okay. Thank you. And with that, Director White, do you have some comments?
Just, thank you, Madam Mayor and council, very briefly. Just to make sure everybody knows, the hearing examiner does not make final decisions on rezone applications. The examiner does on subdivisions and conditional use permits or special use permits, but not on rezones by manner of state law. So, this comes to you as an appeal from his recommendation of denial for this change of zone. It's almost exactly one half acre. It's located on Ella and Road 28, just east, or excuse me, just west of 395. The applicant has appealed the hearing examiner's recommendation of denial. And as Mr. Briggs mentioned, your consideration of this is through the closed record appeal process, going through the record that's been developed as the rezone has been applied for and gone through the particular process. The staff, or excuse me, the agenda report contains two options for council's consideration. One would be to affirm the examiner's denial based on his findings and his recommendation. And the other would be, should council decide, to remand the matter back to staff. And staff will work with our legal team to come up with findings that support a recommendation, in this case, for approval and the accompanying ordinance.
Thank you for that. And with that, do we have any comments from our council members? Any questions? Just Councilwoman Serrano?
Sure. Before we opt into voting, I'm just going to go ahead and telegraph mine here. I'm extremely concerned that this was determined on pure technicalities. If you look at page 15, you know, expressly states, "The rezone application is consistent with the Pasco Comp Plan," and I'm abbreviating that, "which has been determined to be in the best interest of advancing public health and safety." That's item three. Then item four goes on to discuss kind of the benefits to a degree of that. And then when you jump down to page 47, these are the, obviously not the bottom of the page, but the digital pages. 11.3.1, it says, "The RS 12 zoning is intended to allow for suburban densities within the UGA. While the rezone application is consistent with the Comp Plan, the applicant submitted no evidence to satisfy the criteria." To me, I struggle with saying this is consistent with our plan. But, you know, a lay applicant failed to follow procedures, therefore, it's non allowable. Again, so telegraphing, my vote obviously is to rescind this back to staff and maybe slightly modify what you said there, Mr. White. Not so much putting the full burden on staff, but working with the applicant so that you can help them identify what evidence would be valuable in demonstrating how this is consistent with our plan. Again, I see, just, I'll be honest, I don't always read these as well as I did this one. But as I read through it, I just, I couldn't find a real strong justification to deny this, aside from a technicality. And to your point, in the record expressly discusses issues with translation. So, I just think this is really a non deferential standard where we're saying, you didn't meet the technicality, but you're good to go, but you're not good to go. And by the way, we kind of could do some things to help facilitate. So, that's where I sit on this.
If I could add something briefly, although it is a closed record appeal, I think the applicant would have the ability to speak briefly on the project so long as it's, you know, kind of staying within what they proposed initially.
Sure.
If they do want to discuss.
So, we have one comment just before the applicant makes a comment.
Yeah, and I'd say, I agree with Councilmember Serrano fully that when I looked through this, it did feel very much like, I mean, you know, the hearing examiner indicated that this wasn't in keeping with the character of the neighborhood, but none of the neighbors complained. We looked at it, looking at the substantive, there has been no changes. Well, I think since the original zoning was adopted in 97, we know for a fact that there have been substantial changes to both our zoning and our intent as council. And in fact, I'd say that we don't even need to necessarily go back to the applicant for additional information or consideration. I believe that in the original application, there are some items that the hearing examiner maybe didn't fully consider. For instance, there was, one of the items in the original application was, in answer of the question, "What effect would be realized by the owner if the proposed rezone is not granted?" And the answer was, "It would have a seriously negative effect since the distance to bring utilities and the cost of development make a single home project financially inviolable." That is a changing condition since 97. We, as a council, have adopted a much stricter standard for connecting to water and sewer utilities for any development in the city. And that simply wasn't in place when the original zoning was issued. So, as, for instance, it's much more expensive in developing if you have to connect, if you can't, you know, put in a septic or something like that. And so, when we're looking at what's required, what we, what we as a council have chosen to require, that is changed, and it is in the original application. So, I would suggest that that is one, maybe an area where the hearing examiner maybe didn't fully account for what was applied. And then the other item, goodness, there was one more thing. There we go. There's another item in the application which says, "What conditions warrant the proposed rezone?" And the statement is, "Although this is a small project, it contributes to the relief of the lack of affordable housing we are currently experiencing and would help three families find their home in an established and quiet neighborhood." And again, I don't think any of us can deny that since the zoning was originally put in place that our housing prices have gone to crisis levels, I believe, in our community. And so, again, I think that there's an area here where I believe that the hearing examiner perhaps missed the change in conditions that he used as a justification for denying this application. So, I also will be in favor of remanding this to staff to find, to incorporate the findings inconsistent with some of these items that would, I think, allow for this application to proceed. So, that's my two cents on that.
Director White, do you have some comments before they speak?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I do want to just make sure that council knows that the staff report is also contained in this record. And there is a discussion on this very issue within the staff report outside of the hearing examiner's discussion itself.
Thank you.
Good evening, mayor. Good evening, council. Good evening, staff. My name is Alejandro Romero. I'm the interpreter, and I'm also Mrs. Duarte's son-in-law, so.
Thank you for the opportunity to allow me to share information that I have with regards to the project that you see. Two purposes are, are two purposes, were to be able to build three homes at accessible pricing? This probably, it's, the water has to be brought in from a distance? It's unviable, unviable to just put one home on the slot? Okay, and then the lot exceeds the requirements for the zoning size? My findings include some rezoning around the slot? Including one, a development about a block and a half away, R2?
R2.
Okay, another one.
Sorry. Okay.
Más consistente y más siso. Other lots have also been rezoned, R1, near the highway? Some have been subdivided and some will be. So, I'm being denied a rezoning that...
Low density.
Ah?
Low density.
For a low density project? That meets the city's requirements? In the vicinity of my property, there are lots that range from 7,000 square feet all the way to 11,000. And I have a list here. More than 100 lots that don't meet the RS 12 requirements. I have a list of 65, not including recent developments of R...
R2 and R1?
R1 and R2. These 65 parcels are rezoned RS 12. I'm requesting the approval of my project. Because my project meets the low density comprehensive plan.
Y además, todas estas parcelas han recibido un privilegio que a mí no me están dando. Y además, todas estas parcelas han recibido un privilegio que a mí no me están dando.
These parcels have all received the privilege that I, that I'm not getting this time.
Eso es todo.
That's all.
Gracias.
Thank you. Mr. Briggs, is she allowed to submit that document to our clerk?
Uh, that's, it, it, it wasn't part of the record, so, so technically no, but again, it's, so this is generally known. I think the lot sizes around in, in that vicinity, you can kind of look at them, but certainly that wasn't part of the, um, hearing examiner's, uh, record, as well as I think she had some additional items that were submitted with her notice of appeal that technically also aren't part of the record. But it also looks like information that's generally known in the community.
Can she then deliver those to Mr. White at a later time, pending our decision?
Um, she could, but again, it, I don't think it, it could be made part of the record.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, Council, and thank you, staff.
Muchas gracias.
Gracias, señora. Any further comments, uh, Mayor Protem Maloney?
I think you make a motion if we're, uh, done with discussion. All right. Um, let's see, so I move to direct staff to develop findings of fact and accompanying ordinance approving rezon twenty twenty-one, uh, dash zero one. Should, I'm sorry, re- re- zone twenty twenty-two dash zero one.
I'll second that.
We had a motion, uh, we had a motion from, uh, Mayor Protem Maloney. I would just like to correct it real quick, twenty twenty-two dash zero zero one.
Yes, sure.
Oh, it shows different on, on our agenda.
What do you get for reading the staff report?
And it was seconded by Councilwoman Torres. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Any opposed? And it passes unanimously. And with that, we move on to item eight B, continued appeal of Garcia latecomer for water main installation. Director White.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council, and this item also involves an appeal, although it's completely different than the previous item. Uh, but it was continued from the March twenty-first meeting. It's an appeal of the, uh, assessment amounts for a latecomer agreement that installed a water line on, um, Drady Street at Road forty-eight. Um, at the hearing on, uh, in March, Council, uh, requested an additional, uh, piece of information from staff, and that was a different, uh, calculation of the assessment based on the square footage of each parcel as opposed to the front footage, the footage of the parcel measured along the, um, adjacent city street. Uh, that has been provided, it's the second-to-last attachment in your agenda packet, and it's a side-by-side comparison for each parcel of both the, uh, assessment based on the front footage and on the square footage. And, and of course, this might be expected, there are differences in, in the assessments for all of the parcels, uh, some more than others. Uh, but aside from that, um, that will be it for me, and I'll, uh, do my best to answer Council's questions.
Correct, thank you, and before we proceed, Mr. Briggs.
We'll run through that quasi-judicial script again. So quasi-judicial hearing is a, is to render a final decision on the materials presented, is defined as a proceeding in which the council defines the legal rights, duties, or privileges of the specific parties in a hearing or other contested proceeding. In this case, to determine the, uh, the reimbursement area. The appearance of fairness doctrine applies, and the hearing must be fair in three, uh, respects, form, substance, and appearance. All council members should consider whether they have potential conflicts as follows, a demonstrated bias for or against any of the parties, any direct or indirect financial interest in the outcome of the proceeding which would affect the council members personally, whether there has been any prejudgment of the issues prior to hearing on the facts, whether there has been any ex parte contact with anyone other than staff prior to the hearing, any other conflict which a council member believes would prevent them from hearing this matter fairly and impartially. If any council member has any of these concerns or disclosures, now would be the time to, uh, let us know.
Is, is there anything to disclose? Looks like there's nothing to disclose.
Are there any members of the public seeking to disqualify a member of council from participating?
Looks like there's none.
Okay, and this is not a closed record hearing, right, Rick? This is open record, so new evidence can be presented.
Okay, thank you. And with that, any comments from our council members? Mayor Protem, uh, Maloney?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Barahas, and, and thank you, um, um, staff for the, for the update on, on the breakdown here. I guess unsurprisingly, um, there's, there's not a lot of shifts for most of the properties, um, other than the, the long and narrow one to the southwest, um, has dramatically changed their, um, their contribution, um, when moved to a, a square footage. Uh, I'd be interested if, if the, um, um, I believe the, the appellant is, or one of the appellants is here, um, who's spoken before, and it'd be interesting if there's new, any new information. My, my bias is generally to go to what's, what staff has recommended, but I could certainly see an argument of us, um, moving to a, a, an area rather than a frontage. I believe the staff is, staff is, um, generally prefers the frontage method and uses that more commonly, so its consistency is a good thing. But, um, I'd be interested if, um, if the appellant has a, has a preference here personally.
Do you have any comments you'd like to share?
Hi, Chris Hollingsworth. I know that you guys said that the, usually, usually you guys use the, the front footage. But if you look at the, this lot here, the one you're referring to, those are the ones that wanted to bring the water in, and they've already subdivided their lot. So as, as you can see, it's already Lot One and Two. And so they're only being charged for just that little front, when really they actually have four hundred, if you wanted to, you could go by both lots. This line here, which is, you know, about the equivalent of that, is two hundred feet. So each one would be four hundred feet, if you wanted to do it by square footage. That's one option to count both Lot One and Lot Two, so they'd be charged eight hundred feet. Or you can go with the square footage, which would essentially be the same thing, or closer to the same thing. If that makes sense.
Thank you for that. Do you have any?
Yeah, I just wanted to follow up, so, um, the original, um, the original, um, um, latecomer agreement was for linear feet, and so that was basically based on the initial run of pipe along there, and then, then charge whoever's fronting on that pipe, um, proportionate based on their, their frontage. Um, the other option we have in front of us, based on our code and recommendations from staff, would be square foot of the lots. Um, when I look at, because staff did calculate, and I hope you had an opportunity to take a look at what was in provided in the packet, but, um, um, there's of course a shifting in cost, but primarily, um, the Kaiser property to the southwest is the one who, um, benefits most from the change. The rest are relatively minor. So in, any run from that water main to the individual properties will be borne by those developments anyways. So, um, so I'm, I guess, I guess I'm not sure I'm understanding it.
Well, in, in the initial one, Lot One was only, they actually, since the Garcias brought it in for their benefit to subdivide, so they'll have, you know, right now, I'm a, I'm a real estate appraiser. Right now, I, I, generally speaking, a half acre lot's going for about a hundred, a hundred and thirty-five thousand in this area, when you get other neighborhoods, superior neighborhoods without highway, it's more, but. So they have the most to gain, yet they were paying the least because of the front footage, the Garcias was the smallest. And that isn't, doesn't necessarily seem fair that they're going to put the burden for their benefit to gain on all the neighbors to pay a higher amount when they, you know, they're only being charged the, the minor amount one time, even though Lot Two in the subdivision is what has the water. Lot One has water too, there's two water meters, I believe, Jeremy, yeah, there's two water meters, so. They, they have double the use, but only getting charged one time. And they're the ones that brought it in for their maximum benefit. It just doesn't seem right that we all have to pay an equal share when they're the ones benefiting the most.
Okay, I think I have any other questions for you, but I will have conversation with, with the council.
Any further questions or comments from our council?
If we're standing, someone will have anything more for that.
Yeah, not so much for you, more for staff. But if we have more questions, I, I'm sure you'll stay tuned. So, you know, what he just described was, uh, if we did the allocation by frontage, uh, and those were two actual lots. Mr. White, was that an accurate assessment, then arguably lots, uh, one and two of the developers should be fully charged? Is it the one seventy, uh, property frontage twice rather than one seventy once and then thirty once? Is that, is that accurate? Can you, can you explain to me, um, uh, go ahead and do that, I probably have a follow-on question.
Well, I, it, yes, I, I completely understand Mr. Hollingsworth's sentiments. Uh, um, it definitely affects the proposed subdivision, which of course was the originator for the water line installation. It's, I think it's important, though, to remember that this doesn't require a connection to the water main. It's just there should a connection be needed or requested in the future. And the future is a twenty-year timeframe for this latecomer agreement.
Right, right, as I recall, there's no requirement to connect for anyone aside from presumably the Garcias who are requesting this, right? Um, I guess my question on the allocation by frontage footage, you have one lot of the Garcias at one seventy at frontage, thirty at frontage. Uh, as I recall, when we first discussed this, that process of subdividing was incomplete or, or somewhere in process. In the event that, uh, let's say we were to delay this to the Garcias having two lots, two legal lots, having completed the process, would we then see one hundred and seventy linear foot and then the same linear foot for that second property? Or would it still remain at the one seventy and thirty, which is kind of the equity concern here as far as, um, you know, what they're benefiting and what they're paying for? Can you explain that to me a little bit better?
Well, no, I, I, I can't, and the, and the reason, I, I do believe that their, um, their subdivision process may be complete now. I couldn't find it on the county's website, to be candid. Uh, but the amounts would still be, depending on the assessment method, the amounts are still going to be based on either linear footage, front footage, or the area. So the one seventy would remain as would the thirty-foot, uh, assessment if you'd go by frontage.
Okay, I, I think that was my concern, because if the property frontage won't change by subdividing, I guess that's what I'm just trying to parse out here. And if you're suggesting that it won't change the property frontage by subdividing, then that answers my question.
It looks like our computer's about to reboot, unfortunately, in like twenty seconds.
There's no way to prevent it either, I apologize. Is it possible to request a quick recess to restart our computer system?
You need five minutes, ten minutes?
I'm not actually sure, we'll see. I like counsel every million.
Well, let's, uh, we'll take a five-minute break, uh, come back at, uh, eight oh eight, eight ten. Uh, we'll see where we're at that point. And our meeting has reconvened. Mr. Briggs, do we need to re-instate the disclosure?
If you, if you guys really want to, we can run through it. I see, I see head shaking, no, okay.
So, now we're not going to.
Yeah, we should be fine.
We go, go through that process again. Um, and we had just received some comments from some of our council members and we have, Mayor Portem Maloney with some further comment or emotion.
Yeah, no, I'll just finish making my comments here. So when I look at the, but when I look at by area, again, um, the, the property owner that spoke earlier is, if we go by area, it will increase their costs, um, and deviate from our standard. Um, and I'm not sure that's exactly what the, uh, what the opponent's looking for there. Um, I would rather, I would rather keep it consistent on how we've typically done it. Um, but if the opponent is, um, interested in going a different direction, I'd be interested in hearing that, but. We're challenging a couple more difficulties, but I'll, I'll be ready to make a motion shortly, but I just wanna, wanna throw that out there that when I'm looking at the breakdown, that's exactly what I'm seeing. I'm not seeing an option where we can really disproportionately or would want to disproportionately charge that owner no matter how many lots it's broken up into, so I don't see a, a method in our code for really dealing with that, so.
Yeah, we were actually weren't supplied the, the breakdown, we just received it just now, so yeah, we're, the frontages.
So no further comment, recording, okay.
All right, I'd like to make a motion then, um, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, go ahead.
I move to approve the fr- foot, frontage foot assessment for the Garcia late comer agreement.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
And so moved by, uh, Mayor Portem Maloney and seconded by Councilman Campos. And with that, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Maloney, sorry, Ms., Councilman Maloney.
Yes, aye as well.
Thank you. Any opposed, say nay. None opposed, and it passes unanimously. Thank you, and with that, we move on to item number nine. Um, I had nine A, resolution setting a public hearing date for vacating the north south alley of block two Kurtzman's First Edition to Pasco. Uh, vacancy twenty twenty-two dash zero zero one, Director White.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council, and this item, uh, sets, uh, the first meeting, first council meeting in May for a public hearing to consider a request to vacate a twenty foot wide unused and unimproved alley uh, that's located between Sycamore and Hugo, just north of Helena Street. Um, so at the May, I think it's the May second meeting, council will conduct a public hearing on this vacation request, assuming you approved the resolution.
Thank you for that, and with that, do we have any comments or questions from our council members? Uh, Mayor Portem Maloney and then, um, Councilman Campos. Councilwoman Campos, uh, you have the.
Yeah, Director White, could you explain what vacating means in just a brief summary? I'm still kinda confused. Obviously, we're giving up the right of way, but this just means that the property now is then extended another three feet? Or whatever the alley's width is?
Yeah, the, the, um, much of the eastern portion of Pasco was platted like a hundred and forty years ago in some cases, a hundred years ago is, is typical as this was roughly a hundred years ago. Uh, the streets and alleys were all laid out in grid patterns, which is how things happened back then. Uh, the alley is twenty feet wide, it's unused. Um, many alleys in similar situations, uh, several years ago were vacated because they were dumping grounds and, uh, again, unused right of way. Uh, but the twenty foot alley will, if the vacation is approved, um, relinquish that from public ownership and split it down the middle so that each adjoining property parcel will get ten feet of that twenty foot alley. So it'll be added to the, and, and the legal description, uh, that the county assessor uses, um, will reflect the ordinance that happens in May, assuming it gets approved. And, uh, will indicate that ten feet has been added to the lot legal description through vacation X, Y, Z.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments, Mayor Portem Maloney?
I move to approve resolution number four one six eight, setting seven P M. Monday, May second, twenty twenty-two as a time and date to conduct a public hearing and, uh, to consider vacating the north south alley of block two Kurtzman's First Edition to Pasco.
I'll second that.
Moved by, uh, Mayor Portem Maloney and seconded by, uh, Councilwoman Roach. Do we need to vote on this? All vote. All those in favor say aye.
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 Thank you, any opposed, say nay. None opposed, and it passes unanimously. And with that, we move on to item ten A, uh, or, let me go back. To, um, item C, basically, uh, the resolution incorporating the regional pavement cut policy to the city's design and construction standards and specifications. And you had some questions?
Sure, you know, I mean, I'll, I'll just kinda kick this off with, I think generally we all have the consensus that this is a phenomenal idea as far as, insofar as it benefits the city as well as those driving. We did have some questions, um, about whether or not specifically the construction or the building community had, been, been contacted just to determine what impact, if any, there would be on projects, et cetera. Um, and it sounds like that's not the case, no conver- further conversations had. That said, I hear someone online and presumably that's Director Worley. I'll kick it off to him.
Director Worley, would you like to make some comments?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Council, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, I apologize for the previous technical difficulties. I had to restart my computer in order to get the speakers to work. So I apologize for that. Um, as we mentioned last week, I think council asked the question as to whether or not this had been, uh, put forth towards the development community and, uh, regrettably, we had not done that. Uh, we, uh, I should have reached out to, uh, additional staff within the city. I understand there's a developers' meeting once a month. And I should have, uh, reached out and see if I could, uh, attend that and share this information with them. That was not done. Um, but I think the idea is that, uh, the public works directors in the region decided that it would be a good idea in terms of keeping the condition of the streets within each of our cities to as high a level as possible. And the amount of, uh, cuts that get placed on our streets have an impact on the condition rating of the streets, and so in order to preserve those as much as possible, the idea was to create a standard, uh, that would identify how those cuts would be addressed. Um, I did have one contact after last Monday's meeting. Uh, Mr. Steve Bowman contacted me and, uh, mentioned that we had not taken it to the development community, and he is correct. Uh, he had also mentioned that, uh, we should talk about it. I responded to him via email and did not have a chance to reach out to him, uh, by phone yet. And so, um, but, uh, he has some comments, I understand, related to the additional cost associated with those cuts. And, uh, as we mentioned last week, that is correct, the, the standard that is being proposed will increase the cost of those cuts. Most of the cuts are being, uh, required to be larger than what we currently require. And the idea there is to allow the larger areas to be able to get, uh, equipment in there, to be able to compact the subgrade and the rock and the asphalt, so that it makes a much smoother transition through the asphalt. And so we just believe that that will create a better road surface and allow the streets to have a much longer life. So I'd be happy to answer any other questions that council might have.
Thank you, Director Worley, further comments?
If, if I may with one follow on, this is a regional, um, uh, regional agreement or whatever we're calling it, and I'm sorry, my iPad didn't load. Um, so I'm the Worley in this part of the equation. Yeah, it's an interlocal agreement. I'd be interested to know if the other tri or quad cities or whichever municipalities were required to participate in this, whether or not they actually reached out. Again, that's, that's not part of the decision-making process, uh, for me tonight, and I don't need that tonight. Uh, but I do think moving forward to the extent that, uh, we're doing these local agreements, we ought to coordinate an effort with the various communities that are impacted. Uh, again, whether or not a different city, a county signing on and whether or not they've coordinated with the impacted entities, this case being the building community. Um, so again, I don't need an answer to that tonight, but I do think prospectively that'd be advantageous for the city or cities or municipalities involved, so thank you.
Thank you for that. Any further questions, uh, Mayor Portem Maloney?
Thank you, Mayor Barahust, and thank you, Mr. Worley, for, for, um, you know, for acknowledging what situations we're at right now. And, um, Councilmember Serrano, I, I, I wholeheartedly agree. I mean, this is one of those things where there's a cer- a certain set of things that we do that we've, um, we've, as council, I think repeatedly committed to, um, reaching out to the impacted communities and make sure that we're, we're not doing something to someone um, with little gain or potentially a, a bigger trade off than we understand. Um, and so this is one of those areas where I very much encourage, um, I'm encouraged by, I li- I like this policy, I, I appreciate it, I understand it will increase some costs to development, but I, I think it will overall, um, decrease our tax burden on our residents. Um, it makes sense to me that that would overs- that, that ended up offsetting in this case. But in general, I would really appreciate it, again, if there's maybe a set of things that we do as a city, that these are reached, that we do pro- that we do, um, uh, reach out, our outreach before we, we comes before this council. Um, so any, when we're talking about design changes, design standard changes, that is potentially, you know, large implications for the development community. We're looking to various things that we're changing for our, our zoning and our comp plan. Um, things like that, those, there's a set of standards that we, we, we have adopted that when we make those changes, we should be reaching out and making sure that we're, we're fully getting the community's opinion. Um, with that, I do recognize that Mr. Bowman is in the room, and I'm, I'm, if, if there's a possibility of him coming up and if he would be interested, willing to share his thoughts with us, I'd.
Mr. Bowman, would you like to make a few comments? Anyone opposed?
Thank you, Council, for the, for the opportunity. Um, I absolutely agree that, um, it's very helpful when we have a, a, uh, uniform standard across the multiple jurisdictions. And, um, I think that there is absolutely road cuts that are a problem. Um, but going from a four foot road cut to a thirty foot road cut doesn't change the problem, and the problem is the quality of the, of the patch being done. Um, several of the, of the things that Mr. Worley shared with us tonight is absolutely the case. It needs to be wide enough that we can get machinery in there and to do the pro- job, the job properly. Um, four foot versus thirty foot, the same machine is probably gonna be used to do that project. Um, I, since last Monday night, I've looked at hundreds of road cuts, and I haven't seen a single example of a narrow road cut being the reason that the road is failing causing more cost to the taxpayers. Um, to give you an example of cost, um, a four foot road cut on a standard road versus a twenty-five foot road cut goes from five hundred dollars to three thousand dollars. I don't believe that you get a better project, product changing from four foot to thir- to twenty-five foot. I don't believe just the width of that gives you a better product, doesn't. I don't see it as helping, um, have a better quality of road. What I do think is that there can be a standard of quality. Um, there can be a, a smoothness, a ride test, there's a number of ways to do those tests. I did a project in Walla Walla where that there was a very strict design standard construction standards that made sure that it was a smooth ride. So, I think that, uh, that there are several ways to address it. Just widening the cut doesn't give you a smoother ride. It's the quality of how you put that product down. So I, I appreciate your sentiment of reaching out to the affected communities. And, uh, if I believe that making it wider, three thousand versus five hundred when you're doing some projects isn't a noticeable difference, but I don't think that that does anything, it doesn't fix the quality. I think quality is what we need to address. And I appreciate you recognizing, reaching out to the affected communities. It seems like we just keep, the cost keeps rising on everything, and this is one of those, I don't think that, that that width of cut is giving us any better product. Thank you for that opportunity.
Thank you for that.
Can I, Mr. Bowman, I just, a quick question. I know typically we don't engage here. You said that you've gone out and looked at different cuts and kind of opined on this. Were you wa- were you offered the opportunity, or if you were offered the opportunity to opine on this rule, these, this agreement, would you have done that type of research ahead of meeting with the city staff?
Absolutely, absolutely. And, and I'll tell you that there's a lot in the community. I reached out to numerous of our paving contractors asking for their opinion on it. And, and qualities is the piece that we need to drive. Um, I, I feel like making it, making a cut wider is, is a little bit of addressing the symptom, not the cause, and the cause being quality. Quality needs to be addressed, yes, I, I certainly agree with that. But, um, yes, happy to, happy to engage and the development community is willing to engage as well.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. Any further comment, uh, Mayor Portem Maloney?
Yes, thanks, sorry, I'll, I'll be brief. Um, City Manager Zabel, would, would a couple with this, I know this is not an urgent matter from the standpoint of, um, we don't, we don't have to be exactly in lockstep and timing with the other communities, I'd imagine. Um, but I would like, I, I, I'd like some more information, and if, um, if, if, um, I, I can't, of course, and I don't want staff to be put on the spot of having to address, uh, technical differences between whether this will solve the problem or if there's other ways of res- addressing that, so I'd hate to put you on the spot right now, but do you think it would be, if we deferred this decision for a couple of weeks, would it give you the time to do the research that would be necessary, or do you think that there is, um, this is going to be a matter of technical difference in opinion? And we're as resolved as we're gonna get?
Well, at the risk of noting that we have four public works directors involved from four different cities, also there's some coordination needs to happen, but, um, uh, West Richland's not ready to adopt yet, I've been in email contact with, uh, Director Worley. Uh, Richland and Kennewick, uh, are moving forward tomorrow, I'm, I'm assuming they could probably just pull it from their agendas. You know, so we could all be kinda coordinated, particularly if West Richland's not ready yet, I mean, that's, I'm, I'm assuming that, I don't know, you know, how their agendas work, that if it was us, we'd just pull it and wait uh, until Pasco was ready to go. Perhaps they'll do that, perhaps they won't. But, uh, yeah, I don't, I don't think there's anything to us pulling it off the agenda for a couple of weeks. If, if they're gonna approve it, they're gonna approve it, we'll, two weeks from now, we'll go into it knowing whether or not, uh, we have two cities that have one standard and we'll have another standard.
Appreciate that, Mr. Zabel. Certainly, I think that, that, you know, the uniformity across the community is, is huge, and I really think that's admirable, we want to get to that spot. If we can pick up our design standard and apply it across all the cities, I'd be all for that, and, um, I, I, I doubt we can, we can do that so cleanly, but if, if we, but it's a, it's an admirable goal, and I really appreciate that. I just wanna make sure that we've done our homework, and it sounds like we maybe have some more homework to do, so I'd be in favor of, um, of deferring this, this, um, decision until later.
Does anyone else have any comments or any opposition to holding off on it for a couple of weeks?
Uh, no opposition, just to kinda follow up on your comment there, Dave. Uh, if you could please just communicate the basis and, and the fact that we've pulled this to other city managers
Uh, if you could please just communicate the basis and, and the fact that we've pulled this to other city managers that are impacted, uh, it sounds like before tomorrow night.
Yeah, we, we.
The email, like, whatever's quick's fine. Just if we can express why we're delaying this, um, I think that'd be beneficial for context.
I think the, the exciting thing is we'd have a standard that all of us did so we couldn't be used against each other, right? That'd be one exciting thing about this. Finally, one standard that matches all the way across. But I, I did wanna note that, uh, you know, this, this cut policy, the twenty-five-foot cut applies only to, to pavement that's, uh, less than five years old. So it's really only your newer streets. So considering we have twelve hundred lane miles of street out there, yeah, we probably pave about two miles of street a year, lane miles. Um, five years, that's ten miles out of four hundred miles that this twenty-five-hundred cut would, I'm just trying to put it into perspective. There's about, what, two and a half percent of our streets that this twenty-five-foot thing would apply for, apply to. The other standard that's in there for streets older than that is, I think it's a foot wider than the trench, which is pretty standard. You know, it keeps, it keeps the trench from being the weak point and then transmitting right up through the asphalt. So, thank you.
Well, it looks like we'll be pulling this item and, um, revisiting in two weeks. Do you have a motion for that?
Do, do we need to make a motion to, 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 I, I've made a motion at this point in time. Do we need to make a motion to table it? Or if you just, um, let this agenda ride, we'll, uh, with no motion made, we'll be able to address this later?
I don't think we need to make a motion at this time to table it.
Fantastic.
On the agenda.
Okay, and with that, um, city manager, do you have any further questions or comments?
Thank you for the direction.
Okay, so, um, item eleven on our agenda, new business. There's none listed. Item twelve, miscellaneous discussion. Do we have any miscellaneous discussion, city manager?
Actually, none this evening. We, we did, I note that we did lose, there was a few trees around town today. Lot of winds.
Yes. So it looks like no further comment from our council. Uh, item thirteen, executive session. Do we have need for an executive session?
No need this evening.
No need, perfect. That's what we like to hear. And with that, uh, item fourteen, uh, we, um, are adjourned in our meeting. And council meeting has, uh, adjourned. I'm on the wrong. So with that, it is eight thirty-two and forty-five, forty-six seconds. And with that, we are adjourned. Have a great evening.